All right. I'd like to open the regular meeting number four, Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Welcome. Okay, start off the meeting with public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to say or address the board about, we ask you to state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Remember me, I'm Diane Nemeth from Coatesville Township, 329 South 100th Road, Lowville, Ohio, 44436. And I just am here today to urge our county commissioners to encourage the Metro Park Board to partner with ODNR. Because, well, one of my favorite movies is Field of Dreams. It's a baseball movie, and it's "Build It and They Will Come." So if we have more resources, hopefully, more republic will come from across the nation. And also, it would help develop our area with the trickle-down economy from that. As we know, that there is a lot of neglect over there at the park, because I've been on the volunteer board now for, well, just one year. But I've never been called to come out to any functions at the park. And then we know the physical deterioration too, from the past, and all the articles in the paper. So that was my focus for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Richard Scarsello, 6744 Apple Ridge Circle Boardman. I'm here on behalf of the William Holmes McGuffey Historical Society. I'm chairman of the Board of Trustees. Our society gave the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve to Mill Creek Metro Parks in 1998, a national historic landmark, 73 acres. The pond and dock have never been maintained. The park claims they have no legal obligation to maintain them. We feel they have a moral obligation to provide the same first-class, fully-maintained facility in the northeast county of Mahoney County as elsewhere. And I would like the commissioners to do one of the following today: either agree to send a letter or to pass a resolution urging Mill Creek Metro Parks to either transfer ownership of the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve or agree to co-manage the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve as a state nature preserve with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Having a state nature preserve, especially in the low to moderate income part of the county, would promote tourism, could act as an economic development factor, and add prestige to the valley. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, public comments? Sure.
Richard, I agree with both of your premises, and I would like to do that as a board member and put this on as a discussion item and talk to my colleagues about doing this. But I'm fine with doing the most things that you have suggested. I have read many articles. You have presented this consistently and concisively, and I would like to work with my other two colleagues here to see if we can't get that accomplished.
Are you doing that today?
That's the will of the board.
No.
We have to publish when we're going to have someone in our staff meeting, so I will talk with the board, and if we put it on, we'll put it on for next week.
I don't really come to staff meetings, I have nothing for these.
Yeah, and my position is that I agree with you as well. But I think the state legislature needs to step in, and they need to tell us what they're going to request to commit permanent funding, because you can't turn something over that just sits idly again. ODNR doesn't give me any warm, fuzzy feeling that they've ever done anything positively, you know, when requested. You know, I dealt with them through the Woodside Lake ordeal, I dealt with them through many different opportunities, and I have never walked away with a warm, fuzzy feeling. So until they or the state legislature that represents us locally can say to us that they're going to take an approach differently than the Mill Creek Metro Parks have done, I don't think turning it over changes one thing. But I'm more than happy to ask them to change and turn it over and let them and everyone start fighting against the state now to try and do something differently.
The legislators I've spoken to have been asking me, where are the commissioners? So you're the first chip, if you will, the first block, if we can say the commissioners are firmly behind us. The legislators are kind of waiting to see if there's any real support or interest in changing the status quo. We feel being with ODNR could certainly not be any worse than being with Mill Creek Park and having a state nature preserve is really a plus for our valley. The park is ignoring it. Who wants to go visit a swan land? No one. But having a state nature preserve, you'll bring people here to visit with their money, and that will help the county. And Mill Creek Park won't even talk to you. They won't talk to me, and I gave them the property. So if you wait for the legislators to take the lead, not going to happen. Because they keep saying, Richard, where's the local support? You're it. You're the only governing body looking out for the welfare of county residents. Certainly, it's not the park district, or they would have maintained the property equally as a arm other parts of the county. So if you can do it today, we're in a future meeting, that's your goal.
Which I agree with you. But see, therein lies the fallacy, because we have a state legislature that goes to Columbus and puts their rose-colored glasses on and makes voting down there, and they don't come here and discuss what they're talking about. You know, and I give State Representative Lauren McNally credit for coming and spelling out what she's working on and doing, how she's approaching, you know, local government and assisting them. I have not heard back with any intentions to meet from Representative Katrona or Senator Roy. So, you know, from our request.
I have talked to their offices, and there are things going on behind the scenes, but once again, you're the only governing body looking out for this county, because they have bigger fish to fry than a pond and a dock. But to us, to our county, it's very important.
Well, I mean, I think that everyone's responsibility lies with the people that put them in office, and we all have similar-sized areas that, in fact, the representative have, I think, less than the county representatives do, you know? So, you know, I think that it behooves us all to work collectively to try and accomplish something on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County.
But would any of you be willing to, as an interested citizen?
We can't vote or agree to pass resolutions or anything. We vote through resolutions as a board, as we always have.
I'm aware, but can any of you individually issue a letter to us as a private citizen, not necessarily reflecting the county commissioners? Would any of you be willing to do that?
I would, but I would rather do it with my colleagues here.
I will talk.
And pass a resolution that shows support.
I think next week, I mean, when Audrey, we get a formal resolution.
Really?
And we will pass it at our next meeting.
That would be extremely helpful.
A formal resolution is better than any personal letter.
I'll take what I can.
Then, what I would do after the formal resolution comes in, your committee ought to meet down there, have a press conference, and just say, we've already got support from so-and-so, and then maybe, because Judge Rusu actually picks the park board members.
I've spoken to him.
Is he in, I mean, that?
His power lies in the power of appointment, but I know this is not a debate or discussion. So I can certainly come to one of your meetings and talk to you more in depth. But yes, I've talked to all interested parties, and a resolution or letter from your board would make a huge difference in my efforts. And I get nothing out of this, by the way.
No.
I'm doing it for the betterment of the county. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number three, Thursday, January 26, 2023, and approval of bills for payment.
So move?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, travels, domestic relations. Hey, you know what? I was, you know, now that I see you, Don.
Oh, jeez.
I was going to bring that possum over and sit it right here and say it's the closest thing I can find to a groundhog. Is today not Groundhog Day?
Today is Groundhog Day.
Today is Groundhog Day, and I was going to bring, oh, he did!
So six more weeks of winter, according to that room from the east.
We haven't had any winter yet.
Just so you know, DR, to manage the relations part, we have our own prognosticator. It's Mahoney County Michelle, our assistant court administrator. She said we have 46 days of winter left, counting today. You know what? I looked at the calendar, and she was dead on, so she's 100% accurate.
We have the same too. We push Carol out on the street and see if we see her shadow. And then if we see her shadow, we know there's going to be 46 more days of hell to pay.
We may have hell to pay, but not 46 days.
Well, speaking of DR Court, commissioners, the court requests approval for travel for continuing education and professional development on items A, B, and C. Item A is for its magistrate to attend various seminars in the state of Ohio. That amount is estimated at $6,500. Item B is for our domestic violence coordinator provided through a grant and the assistant court administrator in the approximate amount of $1,800, and Judge Smith under item C for her various conferences and committee work that she does with the Supreme Court in the amount of $4,000.
Thanks, Don. And just for your knowledge, the couple of years back, I don't know, probably 500, Don, I was talking about, I feed the wildcats in my backyard all the time, and every time I go out there, there's a possum eating out of the cat food bowl, so now I have to bring it in, bring it out, you know? Every time, you know, sunup, sundown, I got to monitor the food. And then a couple of days later, I walked into my office, and there was a stuffed possum sitting by the door, you know? And nobody owned up to it for several years until I found out. But, okay, probate court.
I'll handle it. This is probate court, 10 Ohio Supreme Court, Ohio Judicial College, and conferences, Ohio Probate Judges Association, Mahoney County Bar Association, Ohio State Bar Association, Ohio Magistrates Association, National Judicial and Legal Associations, meetings, seminars, and conferences within the state of Ohio, and other destinations for the year 2023, estimated at $14,000. This is non-general and continuing education.
Thank you. Risk management, Kathy.
Good morning, everyone. This is the Public Risk Managers Association's annual conference in Long Beach this year. Registration is encouraged and paid for by our insurance pool, Corsa, and there are some scholarship reimbursement monies available through CLICA. It's in June, and it's non-general.
If you're going to go to a seminar in Long Beach, California, you should make it like in December. You know, June.
What are you going to do?
All right, motion approved travels.
Motion approved travels, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Agreements, facilities.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, hon.
A is an agreement with Red Lake Transmission for transmission replacement on our 2011 E150 van, the amount of $3,160.
Thank you. When you talk transmissions in Youngstown or Mahoney County, the first word you think of is Redlich, right?
Exactly.
I'm telling you.
Yep.
What a name. All right, JJC.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with Dr. Joseph Seteric to act as a medical health authority and provide medical services to detention center in the amount of $10,400 general fund.
Thank you. Jobs and family.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Nancy, Audrey, and Jim. This is letter C, Agreement for Job and Family Service Subgrant Agreement with YMCA for the Youth Development Program in the amount of $400,000. This is non-general. Letter D, Job and Family Service Amendment Number Two with MITAT to extend the home and administrative services until September 30th, 2023, in the amount of $800,000, and this is also non-general. Thank you.
Thank you. Lead based.
Good morning, commissioners. Letter E is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 1040 Alameda, in the amount of $33,350, non-general, and also in conjunction with the City of Youngstown CDBG grant program that we have. F is an agreement with American Pinnacle for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 169 East Ravenwood, in the amount of $27,775, also non-general, and this is actually two units duplex up and down. And G is an agreement with Howland Company for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 1035 Hawthorne, in the amount of $45,815,70, non-general, and in conjunction with the City of Youngstown CDBG program.
Okay, thank you. Recycling.
Good morning, commissioners. Items H and I are all drop-off site lease agreements with these respective communities to house our drop-off recycling centers as well as provide some incidentals. Item J is an agreement with Mahoney County Public Health. This is for landfill inspection enforcement, groundwater monitoring for the various closed and operating landfills in Mahoney County.
Thank you. Sanitary.
Good morning, commissioners. Hi.
Erica, how are you?
I am well, how are you?
Are you taking over for that older gentleman that works there?
Yeah, today I am.
Wow, it's a nice change for us.
Okay. All right, letter K. Agreement with APO pumps and compressors to provide repair and maintenance services on compressed air and pumping equipment at the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant in the estimated amount of $7,500, and that's non-general funds. Letter L. Agreement with Alcon Mechanical Piping for Backflow Preventer Testing for all locations for two years in the estimated amount of $3,000 per year, non-general. Letter M. Agreement with BNR Inc. for maintenance, inspection, rebuild, and repairs to the chlorine equipment at various locations in the estimated amount of $5,000, also non-general. Letter N. Agreement with Airvac Inc. for repairs to vacuum controllers utilized in the North Lima and Damascus collection systems in the estimated amount of $5,000, non-general. And letter O is an agreement with JW Murdoch &amp; Sons Inc. for garage door service and repairs at various locations for two years in the estimated amount of $10,000 per year, also non-general.
All right, so Pat's trying to get you to be Tara now, huh?
He's trying.
All right, thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
Motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, letters A through O.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders. Lead based.
Letter A is a change order with American Pinnacle Construction for some work done at 145 East Philadelphia, lead hazard control work in the amount of $900, non-general. B is a change order with American Pinnacle for chip rehab work at 172 Marion in the amount of $1,850. You're going to see a few more change orders for that property coming down in the next week or so. And it kind of got, they got separated because of the dates, but it, there's going to be three or four more coming down for that, small change orders. But C is a change order with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 133 East Philadelphia in the amount of 700, all three are non-general.
All right, thank you. OMB grants.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a change order number one with Canfield Township to extend the improvements to the bike trail at Canfield Township Park until December 31st, 2023. No change in amount of $99,000, and this is non-general.
Excellent. Sanitary.
All right, this is change order number one and final with Bowken Sons Inc. for the Meander, Camel, Craig Beach, and New Middletown Wastewater Treatment Plant Roof Replacement Project Improvement Number 516. This is a decrease in the amount of $59,663, and this is non-general.
Thank you. We don't see many decreases. All right, motion approved change orders.
Motion approved change orders, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Road closings.
Good morning, commissioners. Audrey, good morning, Rick. This is a road closure with closing silica road near Lipkey Road intersection beginning February 6th through the 9th.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Motion approved.
Motion approved, road closings, 5A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Appointments. Linda, you want to?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Letter A involves the reappointment of three individuals to the CVB Advisory Board. These are all outstanding board members, and that would be Nancy Sullivan, Ken Bigley, and Paul Hagman. Nancy has a wealth of experience in the hospitality industry over many, many years, currently with the bunker in Double Bogies, a great new addition to bringing people to the area. Ken Bigley, of course, with JAC Management, Cavelli Center, and Youngstown Foundation Amphitheater. Paul Hagman, very involved in the community for many, many years. And then letter B is appointing three new individuals to serve on the CVB Advisory Board, effective January 1st, for their first two-year term. Stacey Butler with Mill Creek Metro Parks, she is the head golf pro at the golf course. Of course, golf is very important to bringing tourism, tours to our area. Marvin Logan Jr., Executive Director at OHWOW, Children's Center for Science and Technology, again, a wonderful attraction we have here. And Ryan Martino, who is an incredible ambassador for our community. He's always out there touting the great things to see and do here. Ryan also serves on the Board of Directors at the Butler Institute of American Art, so we have a tie to that attraction as well.
Do we mandate that he lets us drive his car?
I don't think that would be possible.
What do you mean? I'm tired of just, you know, getting a calendar. I want to ride the car.
You want to drive the car? Well...
It's only one seat or two, I think I have to drive it by myself. Thank you. Okay, motion approved appointments.
Motion approved appointments, A and B.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolution additions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, engineers.
This is a resolution declaring unnecessary for public use to appropriate all right title and be simple and require temporary construction easement for certain persons of property making construction, repairing, widening, or improving western suburbs.
All right, thank you, Rick. Okay, we're going to do the separate resolutions, A, motion? Oh, okay. Joe, you want to do it first?
Good morning, everyone. Here's a resolution approving the moral location payment of $28,350 to Intel, TeleTech Corporation for jail management software and a support prior to agreement.
Okay, motion.
Motion approved resolutions to A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Motion approved resolutions to B.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Abstain. Okay. Good of the order. Jim, do we have any good for the order?
He just sits there looking. No.
All right, anyone out there?
Nothing that you'd want to say.
Department heads or electeds have anything to add to the, um, good of the order? Audrey? Any good?
All good.
All good?
All good. Always. I wouldn't say there isn't all good.
Anthony?
I'd just like to say I hear the Arms Museum is reopening. That's a great thing for our area, and I would like to thank Richard and your board and everybody for what you've put forth to the community to make everybody understand the importance of the McGuffey Fund and what's involved there, and to try to restore that back and put it under the auspices of the ODNR and allow them to maintain it, and then we'll have their presence here in our valley, as you said. And I just want to thank you both for that.
That's it.
Thanks, Anthony.
Carol?
I'll just speak. And they won't laugh about that now. I just, have a nice weekend, everyone. It's good to hear, that's been around for so many years.
Generations.
Oh, I know. And I was there back in the day when it was a farm. And, you know, it's just a sad situation, not only just for this, this park that's on the east side in Coatesville, but for everywhere that's in older areas of Mahoney Valley. It's overlooked to the point where that's not the only place. And the sad part is, you're here fighting for something that's right, that should be done, it's in the city, basically borderline city, Coatesville. And there's so many other areas in Mahoney County that could use a little TLC, you know? And hopefully, hopefully what we do will help that. Like Dave said, the legislators need to really start looking at the need of the people in their districts. I think, I think we're, sometimes get too consumed with a bigger picture, and we forget about the little guy on the bottom, and that's the sad part. And hopefully that'll work. Let's keep our fingers crossed. And then I'll take a picture and show you what's on the bottom of Price Road. Anyway, have a nice weekend, be safe. I don't know, I don't know if it's going to snow or go to 50.
Breaks my heart, and whenever they tell me it's going to be five below, I've got three wildcats that live under my porch. You know, I have these little igloos with heating pads in them and stuff, but they're still feral, you know? It's like, you know, I've got a garage 10 feet away that's heated to 60 degrees, and you can't lure them in. I've been feeding them for eight years, Don, and you'd think they'd think by now that, you know, I'm not going to hurt them. But what are you going to do? But, yeah, you know, the, when you talk about the state and different things, you know, I read the article about, about the state and, you know, Governor DeWine, and I actually like Governor DeWine, I think he's done some very good things for us. And, but then I see the announcement of infrastructure and bills and money being allocated, and everybody patting each other on the back down there. And 100%, or the majority of funds for the major infrastructure projects, to their own admission, is all ARPA funds. You know, it's all the ARPA funds from the federal government that they all voted against. Every Republican voted against, not one single Republican voted to give ARPA funds to help local government, local communities. All of them. And now they're touting, hey, we've got all this money, and we're going to help everybody. Well, if they didn't take away the MCO funds, we could help ourselves, because it's going to be far more, you watch, let's keep a running total on how many millions come back to infrastructure projects and see if it adds up to 35 or 40 million that we've lost over the last five years. lost over the last five years on projects that we could have if they didn't dig a hole deeper for our, from our revenue stream every year with the budget when it comes out. You know, and, and then you see, then you see the news come out on Exxon Oil, fifty billion dollars of profit. Fifty billion, and Chevron, thirty-five billion. We're paying five, six dollars in California for gas, four and five dollars for gas, and if that's not the most blatant form of price gouging that they took advantage of, you know, I, I mean, it's records. I mean, they've never made profits to this extent, and you don't have to look at it as present dollar value, look at it, you can march it back to nineteen sixty-two when their last record profit was, and try to compare the two. You know, the hypocrisy of how things go and what we accept. Then we accept, you know, the guy that owns, or the guy that owns Facebook or Instagram, he pays zero in taxes, the, the Fortune five hundred company, a lot of the top ten pays zero in taxes, and we accept that as a, as a federal government, you know, instead of moving forward to do things that, you know, that come down to local communities. Because, just like you said, the things that we do, we're scratching for pennies to fix a park, and the infrastructure dollars and stuff, you know, we're, we're trying to get a little bit here, a little bit there, and what do we see them voting on? You know, nothing that comes down from any level of government above local that helps people like you and I. And right now, we're gonna be going through another situation with the SNAP program and all the things that, you know, Audrey Morales has explained to us on what they're taking away. You know, people are trying to eat and pay their electric bill, and the insurance, you know, not insurance, the interest rates. I mean, the interest rates are absolutely obscene. You know, if you have a credit card that, you know, and, and believe me, we've all been in a situation where you had to use your credit card, and they're no different than a cash advance place that's a loan shark. I mean, if you get a credit card, my wife at Christmas time charges, right? And she has to charge to get her lifetime Macy's discount. My wife managed Macy's for thirty-eight years. She gets twenty-five percent off on a discount on everything she buys, but she can't pay for it. It has to go through her credit card in order to, to get the twenty-five percent discount. And if you don't pay it off all at once, their interest rate is thirty-two percent, thirty-two percent. I mean, if that's not a loan shark, what is? I, and I tell her, you know, that twenty-five percent you spend is, is, twenty-five percent you get as a discount is wiped out i- if you, if you don't pay it all off. And, and, you know, Christmas time is, she buys everybody things, a couple thousand dollars, maybe I pay half it off, and then when you get the second half and you see that the interest rate that was charged on the first half, it's just like blows your mind, right? And, you know, it's crazy. You should never be able to charge like anyone more than two or three times prime. I mean, how much? And, and it's always the, it's always the, the, the people that live dated or pay-to-pay that are, that are impacted the most. And, you know, those, those are the people that can least afford to pay thirty percent interest that have to pay thirty, and theirs is more. You know, I had a friend of mine that went and bought a car. He bought a car, you know, he couldn't get a bank loan 'cause his, his credit score was too low, and they, they did it at the car lot, and, I mean, literally he's paying twenty-five percent interest on a car. He, he bought a car that won't last as long as his payments are gonna have to be, you know? So, you know, we, we really have things skewed here, you know, when we allow, you know, Exxon, and I, I'll tell you, I, you know, I try to do everything as much loyal, loyal to our local community and, and be, you know, responsive to people that own businesses. I haven't, I, I think that maybe once or twice I've been stranded to, to get, but I have not bought a gallon of Exxon oil or Exxon gas since the Exxon Valdez crashed and killed all the animals on the beaches. And, 'cause that's just me. You know, I mean, I, I look at that and I think, you know, when I walked, watched the whole scenario and what happened and how, how negligent they were and what they did and their profit margin, I said, I'm done with them, you know? But, you know, I, I just think it's a travesty that, you know, that people that can't afford food are paying thirty percent interest on things, and we've got a company that, that makes fifty billion dollars in profit and gouges the American public and turns around and, and, you know, it just never ends, never ends, so. Oh, that's my soapbox, but I have one good thing to say. And, and in spite of Joe, you know, 'cause Joe, Joe, he chased this poor young lady out 'cause he was so mean to her, you know? Our, our sweetheart, Linda Hall, who is, who is related to Audrey, Audrey's much older sister.
A year older.
Much older sister. She, she worked at the Sheriff's Department, she's an amazing person, and she's the hardest worker, one of the hardest workers, 'cause there's quite a few, but one of the hardest workers we had at the county, and she quit a while back, and she opened her own tender care senior activities center for older adults like myself and Carol and, and Jimmy, and we can all go. And it's called Anthony's The Young Man. And her LLC is Bodimus LLC, and I have to tell you the story there. See, that's how I'm, I'm on a roll. She, now, correct me if I'm wrong, when Bodie, they call her Bodie, Linda Hall's her name, they call her Bodie. And they call her Bodie because growing up, do you remember Cheyenne Bodie?
Yeah.
That was the cowboy show that was on TV. Clinton Walker was the guy. And she loved that show, right? And so they nicknamed her Bodie. So they've always called her Bodie because of Cheyenne Bodie, right?
Yes.
And so she named her corporate LLC Bodimus, and I'm sure it's Bodie with an M U S, you know?
That's what the sheriff called her. That's what the sheriff called her, Bodimus. Put a muscle on, on everybody else.
But, but here's, here's a woman that is so passionate about helping seniors and helping people that her and her husband, she quit her job and she went and she started the senior center, and it's, it's in Trumbull County, but it's on, out towards Viana on Belmont.
In Viana.
And, and she has her grand opening Saturday morning at ten AM, ribbon cutting, and I would have read the announcement from the Chamber of Commerce to you, but Bodie wrote it and it's like six pages long. And so if you have a, an elder adult, or if we are, you know, I mean, I got my Medicare card now. So if you have someone that, that you can take out to, to her facility, it's, it's very inexpensive, I think it's like thirty dollars for a month, you know, and, and.
Hundred dollars.
Or, yeah, thirty dollars a week, hundred a month, yeah, gotcha.
Plus the activities.
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
Road trips.
Right, so there's a lot of things that, that are available there, so keep it in your memory banks if you have someone that, that has the need, so.
She's an excellent coach.
I thank you for listening to my soapbox, and with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedia Wiegetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. We don't have any more meetings, that's the last one for the year, right?
Good.
Oh, yeah.
Good. Okay. Next meeting, Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-three, ten AM, same bat time, same bat station.